Oh.
Don't reach me. You're ten seconds.
You haven't signed any police do so. Hello.
I left it up there.
There we go. We will come eighty to order at seven o'clock and start with the bunch of the lead.
I would like to be pissed into the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the next one. Do we have anybody on soon Nathan?
Uh, I would like you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we want to start with role ball guy. You want to pick us off?
Guy, your other street utility superintendent. Prince lesser ninety-five header guy, number at large. Dan, we're the one twenty-six light side Forbes, uh, member award two.
Molly, number eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive, member at large.
Burch Snackle, uh, council number, word one, one thirty-four, West Curry. Nathan's trailer, clear treasure, two ninety out.
Yeah. He makes sure that is in there. Excellent. Um.
We're over.
Thank you, everybody. Um, Bert Elliott is not able to be with us this evening, but we are going to move forward. I've, uh, this is typically a longer meeting since we will be talking about the budget. I can guarantee we will not go as long as the county today. Their budget meeting was over five hours. That would be way past my bedtime, so we're not going to do that. I do. There is a running bet here when we can get done by, so we'll see how we do. Um, but just know, uh, for the public, we will have general discussion and public comment at the end. So I would just ask you to make notes if there's anything we discuss that you have questions on. Um, move forward with an approval of move forward with the agenda we have in front of us. I'll take a motion on that.
This is Trent. I make a motion to forward the agenda as presented. This is staying. I second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. We'll now move forward with the approval of the monthly reports. And the first is the August nineteenth, uh, our regular council meeting, our regular, uh, meeting minutes. And Nathan, do you have that up?
Yeah, the minister.
I just want to make sure the one change.
I verify.
Okay, great. So I'll entertain, um, motion of those minutes.
George, I will, that we accept the, uh, August nineteenth, this as the day.
Dan, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now Nathan, we'll move to you for the August and September voucher registered grant, please.
Thank you, Madam President. This voucher runs from August nineteen to September sixteen. It's pretty typical voucher. There's two categories on here. Uh, you will see charge from DLZ on the seventeenth of September for twenty thousand dollars. That is for our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six room project surveys. So that charges a little bit out of the ordinary. There for you guys. Um, on the general side, I'm asking for approval for eighty-three thousand six forty-nine fifty-five cents. On the sewer side, I'm asking for approval of fifty-two thousand two oh seven with ninety-three cents for a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand eight fifty-seven and forty-eight cents. Any more question? Uh, the project span on maybe voice system, uh, four thousand eighty dollars. Yeah, voice, that's our kind of software. That's our main, that's an annual fee. Yes. Does that cover all of? There's three modules. There's one for Billy. That comes out of Sewer CC on the silver side. Yeah. Then you have two one changes. Okay.
Thank you. See, any other questions for Nathan? Right. I will entertain a motion to accept the voucher register warrant as presented.
This is Dana. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to accept the voucher written for a warrant as written.
Dan, could I have a second?
George, I have a second motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, well now move down to new business. One of the things, uh, the employees on staff had asked is about our twenty-six council meeting schedule. They have to get things, um, published. And it might seem a little bit early, but everything they have to do, uh, it isn't early. So what's in front of you and it was in your packets, and Nathan will be putting it up on the screen. Are the keeping our date the same, but there are Tuesday of the month at seven, you know? That's Tuesday seems to work well for everybody. So if there's any last minute things that we need to work through, we at that opportunity. So I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the schedule as presented for twenty twenty-six.
This is George. I move that we accept the, uh, twenty twenty-six sched-, uh, council meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you, George.
This is Dan. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. And I believe Nathan, you are going to do the additional appropriation resolution. Is that correct?
Uh, Dan, you want to do that one? I'm sorry. You have to pay it.
I don't want to do. Oh, sorry. You want to do? Uh, so because this is just, uh, because this is a resolution, uh, it does not need to be read in full. We just need a motion and the motion needs to include the type.
And President, I'd like to make a motion for to move forward with the additional appropriation resolution over five dash twenty twenty-five. This is Dana. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Nathan, could you move that on screen so the audience can see what that resolution is?
See, yeah, what we're doing is we're just adding, uh, money onto, uh, general side for attorney fees. So we've gone through a little bit more money than we anticipated on the attorney fees. And they're also adding five thousand dollars to other professional services. We've ran a little bit over that category. So those are the two categories we ran. Just you guys can kind of rule. Right, there's the.
Thank you, Nathan. We'll now move it over to Dan on our twenty twenty-five community crossing matching grant.
Thank you. Yes, uh, this, uh, has, uh, to standard, we have a good, uh, public, uh, meeting and discussion about the, uh, engineering, uh, plans for this, uh, coming years, uh, community crossings grant. Uh, it deals with the segments associated with, uh, South Clear Lake Drive from roughly address seven, seven forty, uh, down past the, uh, public raft out to outer drive and around outer drive. But point. Uh, we've, uh, not only reviewed, uh, the detailed, uh, design, but we also held a uh, comprehensive walk, uh, with the community and, uh, the engineering team. Uh, physically walk all those segments and, uh, got inputs directly uh, from the, uh, residents along those stretches of road and all of those who've been included into the site. Our schedule, uh, for community crossings matching grant is to apply, um, for the grant, uh, the first week of October, which is just a couple of weeks off. So we're working furiously, uh, to get there. Uh, one of the actions that we took from the public meeting was to, um, uh, trying to discover, uh, what, uh, things, uh, that we can put in the application to improve probability of the war. Uh, we have, uh, let us say identified a nice comprehensive listing. And we're working through that now. We're, uh, engaging, uh, the road committee, um, and, uh, in that, uh, review of that application, uh, to enhance its, uh, uh, quality. Uh, so with that said, um, we're at the point tonight that, uh, I would like to make a motion to authorize, uh, kind of clearly to prepare and submit the application for, uh, the, uh, twenty twenty-five community crossings matching grant. In addition, I would also, uh, like to combine, uh, part of that motion to authorize, uh, Big and Ripley as the, uh, uh, person to sign the financial commitment letter uh, for that that goes along with that grant application.
Great. We have a motion. Any kind of second?
George, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, and thanks for keeping us on track and not adding additional meetings and including the residents. I think it's been huge.
And I just, just for there, I'd like to, uh, state that I was at the, uh, road, uh, public meeting. And it was excellently, uh, prepared and presented. Also, the feedback I've got from, uh, individuals around the town that didn't walk, said it was priceless. So Dan, uh, the initiative of doing that is, I think we need to look at it for another, for the next year also, because it's, it's a home brand. At this point, we have rest. So thank, just thank you, Dan. You're very welcome.
I absolutely agree. I couldn't attend the meeting, but I was on the walk through and sentiments were the same. So great. Um, with that being said, we will now, uh, Nathan, turn it over to you for our twenty twenty-six, uh, budget presentation. And keep in mind for everybody here at the table and in the audience, this is the first time we take on our budget process. We'll go through in details. Um, council will ask questions of Nathan as needed. Um, and if you guys just want to make a note, then we'll do it at the end of the meeting versus opening it after closing it. Uh, and then at the end, I will need a motion to move forward as it's, that it was presented or based on feedback. So Nathan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President.
I think, yeah, you got it up, but.
Yeah. So the budget, um, all the numbers you're going to see are for funds that are tax-led. So any fund that we receive tax funding for, we have, we set a budget to the state and account for every penny that we spend for tax-led money. All these numbers you're going to see are all a fund that are tax-led for the town. Our sewer accounts, does that count towards the budget as far as the state looks at? And we obviously look at that. Uh, but these are all the ones the state looks at. So when I go through, uh, the first category we're going to talk about is rainy day. Uh, we're not putting anybody into the rainy day or taking anybody out. It's a rainy day fund. First three lines there, um, are staying at zero. The next fund we're going to talk about is a general fund. General fund is the largest fund, um, in our town. The first category we're going to talk about, and you see right there, is town council. So for the town council, we use, uh, budget of twenty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. On the general side for clerk treasury, we have a budget of forty-one, six, one, six. In building, we have, uh, scheduled fourteen thousand one hundred. So I think Dennis Reeder, twenty-one thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Deputy clerk treasury, zero. Town marshals, seventy-two thousand thirty-six dollars. Perf on the general side, nine thousand nine dollars. Social Security and Medicare, thirteen thousand five twenty-three. Under twenty-nine, eight hundred dollars. Employee health insurance, fifteen hundred. Office blood.
Take it. I just have to be there for, yes. The employee health insurance is not insurance. It's longevity.
Correct. And we could change that, yes, and it'd be a very, I think, long issue.
And Deputy clerk treasurer, or is the spell, I can't read, no money in there, but.
All right. So office supplies, we have twenty-seven hundred. Operating supplies, we have seventy-five hundred. Fuel and tires on the general side, we have twenty-seven hundred. Equipment repairs, twenty-eight. Uh, money we set aside for the planning commission, thirty-five hundred. Or the zoning appeals, twenty-eight thirty-five. Town attorney on the general side, fifty-five thousand. Other professional services, twelve thousand five hundred. Postage, fourteen hundred. Bees and trout, three thousand. Telephone online service, nine thousand four hundred and fourteen. Conferences, zero. Publication of legal notices, one thousand eighty dollars. Insurance, thirty-six thousand. Eletting, twenty-three thousand six thirty-six. Gas. Or heat. Correct, George?
No, gas is at gas, probably at.
Three thousand seven thirty-four. Sewage on the general side will be paid for. For those bathrooms over there, it's kind of weird that it says sewage on the general side. It's probably paid for us, but twelve hundred dollars. Brown's maintenance, one thousand three seventy-five. Building maintenance, one thousand nine hundred. Machine and equipment, three hundred. Fuel rentals, six hundred. Other services charges, fifteen hundred. News and memberships, seven thousand. Other charges, we're putting zero there, and we have infrastructure, uh, generator chart that we're looking at for fifty-two thousand five hundred. That's, that's page here.
Anybody as we end that page, any questions or comments? Maybe from council?
No, the next, uh, department, our next fund is local living contacts, LIT. On the LIT side, our uniforms and supplies, yeah, LIT is mainly used for the police. Uh, so these funds are generally going to go towards police use. Uh, so on the uniform supplies, we have fifteen two hundred. Fire protection falls into that category as well. That's forty-four thousand four ninety-five. We paid out a free bond for fire protection. That's where that money goes to if you're curious about that. By equipment repair, there's twenty-five hundred. Stillman services comes, six thousand. Machine and equipment, fifty-five. That's everything for LIT. Uh, for local roads and the street, we got one charge that we had here with the street repairs for eight thousand, we're, uh, budgeting. Uh, the next biggest category for the town.
Nice. Um, I just have a quick question, and it might be for Chris from Brent. On LIT, can you guys remind me how much lots of coal is? I mean, for the renewal?
I'm right here. The number that we've all thought ahead of, I don't know what else I can, well, that's fine.
That's fine. That's fine.
No, that's.
Uh, yeah, I can go back into the contract. I think yours two guys had it in.
It was also for stillman and flexible.
Okay, on, on this, the six thousands for, okay. Nathan, would you mind making a note, stillman and lots of coal on there?
And that does take into account the four percent increase. That's definitely, because there's going to be a four percent increase over the next few years.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like a lot of it.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
So the next, uh, category is motor vehicle highway, MPH. This is generally what Guy uses. Uh, this is a lot of the stuff that you'll find out in the bar. So that's what a lot of these charges, uh, count for. On MPH resuming, we have, uh, budgeted four thousand six hundred eighty dollars. For the town superintendent, that's Guy, twenty-six thousand four fifty-one. Auto worker, we have, uh, scheduled twenty-one thousand seven forty-one. Social Security Medicare, four thousand one hundred two. Perf, six thousand one hundred fifty-three. Unemployment insurance, four hundred. Employee health insurance for longevity, eleven hundred. Same as all, thirty-five hundred. Small vehicles, eighteen twenty. Street materials, fifteen hundred. Street signs, fifteen hundred. Fuel and tires, eight thousand. Attorney fees, twenty-two fifty. Engineering and survey on the MPH side, fifteen thousand. Building repairs, fifteen hundred. Equipment repairs, two thousand eight seventy-five. Pre-repair is zero on that side. Pre-removal of trade, ten thousand two hundred. Hitch bases and culverts, three thousand. Other services and charges, fifteen hundred. Machine and equipment, three thousand.
Any questions on MPH for Nathan? Yes, Brent?
Yes. Um, actually, I was going to go quote maybe I'm Guy, the ten, the ten thousand two hundred. Does that allow you to continue with your plan on making sure road? It's clear with the pre-removals, but it is, so that's what that's for. Okay, just want to make sure. You guys made good progress. Thanks for that.
All right. The next category is major moves toll road counties. This was a, uh, file that was put together when they put in toll road years and years ago. We don't have any money coming for that. I made a budget for that. Continue education, uh, same on that side. We have not, uh, budgeted anybody for teaching education. Uh, so the next department is CCD or what we call community capital development. On this side, the attorney fees were, uh, budgeted twenty-five hundred. Engineers and surveys, thirty thousand. Professional services, zero. And on CCD side, we're doing a street repair, two hundred and fifty thousand. So this is where the money comes from for our street collections. So every year in CCD, we get property tax money that comes in for the CCD. We didn't do a project this year, so we kind of saved up a little bit. That's how we have enough to pay for a project going forward. Uh, so that's why you see that big amount coming out of the CCD. That's where you always see the big amounts coming out for street projects. Because I'm CCD, yeah. Uh, and then the last category that we have tax-led funds, uh, that we budget for is economic development. Tax credit, and the only thing that we budget right there is for street barriers for nineteen thousand. So that is the budget estimate now.
I thought that was the, uh, estimate.
What's that?
Study. Study.
Oh, so the nineteen thousand.
I think that's worth it.
All right. So that is the street numbers that we have in the budget. Now, the next I'm going to talk about are the detailed budget numbers. So as you look at the, uh, chart for now, you'll see the rainy days, uh, right here. In yellow, I have highlighted the estimated balance for the end of twenty twenty-five. We don't have any money coming in. We're out of the rainy day. So you see down here, the estimated balance is two seventeen for the end of twenty twenty-six. So that's pretty straightforward. No money coming in, no money coming out. The balance should stay the same. Now, the next one is the general account. The general account is where you're going to see a lot more action, a lot more money we pay for. This is, look, the yellow number right here, five eighty-eight oh one is our expected balance, that fund at the end of twenty twenty-five. In green, you see the revenues coming in. We have four hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenues coming in. In red, these are our budget estimates for twenty twenty-six. We have four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in budget commitments. So that leaves us with a two thousand dollar, around about two thousand dollar surplus. So you'll see in yellow at the bottom here, our balance projected at the end of twenty twenty-six goes up by that two thousand dollars to that five thousand nine hundred and five thirty-one. So that's kind of how those forms look. So the general side, we're right on, uh, where we're matching revenue with our expenses. So that's right where we want to be. Next category we're going to look at is local income tax. Same here on the other side, uh, uh, and highlighting the others, ninety-two thousand is our balance for the end of this year. With sixty-eight thousand expected coming in, sixty-three expected, uh, as far as uh, estimates going out. So we should see a five thousand dollar or so increase in that form. Next one, local roads and street, not a whole lot of action, that one. Twenty-eight thousand is our balance at the end of this year. We have ten thousand dollars come in. And we have, uh, sorry for me, seats at seven.
Eight.
Eight. So we have a little bit of, uh, surplus of that account as well. You go to MPH, this is the second busiest account. Right here, yellow, you'll see our expected balance in this year. Incoming receipts expected for next year, a hundred twenty-eight thousand. And, uh, a hundred twenty thousand is the budget estimate. So we're about eight thousand dollars surplus on here. So again, we're right there where we should. This one is toll road counties, nothing happened there. Our balance should stay the same. No money coming in, no money coming out. Continue education, same thing. No money coming in, no money coming out. Balance should stay the same. Female capital improvement with cigarette tax. And it says in here, nothing coming in, nothing going out. But we do have five hundred five ninety-six coming in, seven, seven five seven going out. So actually, we are under that one, I think, though. CCD is a big one where we have the charging out, the money coming out for a road project. Here is the projected balance at the end of twenty twenty-five, two sixty-eight, three fifty-seven. You can see our expected receipts, a hundred ninety-three thousand. Our expected, uh, expense, two eighty-two, five hundred. So you can see our balance is going to go down to that one. Projected to be about a hundred seventy-nine thousand five thirty-four at the end of next year after we pay for road purchases. So that still leaves a pretty good amount in that fund that we can build upon for the next year to roll right into the next road project. Then the last one is economic development tax. You can see our balance, a hundred eighty-two thousand. We have thirty-one thousand coming in in the seeds. Only nineteen thousand going out. So that side, we're on positive as well. And that is the basic numbers and estimates now. These are all estimates, so they're not exact numbers, but these are what we expect our budget to come in at for the end of this year. Got to see all the expected balances. Got to see, uh, revenues and expenses for next year. And our town is funding all of our accounts with the exception of the CCD account because we have a big, large road project coming up. All the other funds are funded with receipts we have coming in for our tax dollars. We're not really we're not tapping into our savings and cashing it in if I'm actually doing activities except for, uh, CCD side. Any questions?
Yeah, Nathan, uh, the budget year total revenue uh, for twenty twenty-six, is that based on prior years, assessment evaluation?
Yes.
Okay, so when we get into assess valuation, we'll see from the town's perspective, it goes up from, you know, personal perspective, it goes down. Uh, there, there could be more revenue coming in and.
And I also have a follow-up, a miscellaneous revenue for for the DLGF where I put in every single source of revenue that will be upcoming into town, whether it's culvert, whether it's permits, whether it's a road cut permit. So every single amount of revenue that the town gives, I have to account for, the state looks at. So everything, every single penny is accounted for. It comes in and it comes out.
Just a comment. Highlight something Nathan mentioned, uh, just for the general public's knowledge. Do see a large amount coming out for the road project. But one of the things when Nate was at the clerk treasurer's conference, that he heard down there was some of them were actually looking in order to do it, possibly having to take out funds. So the, the way that we're approaching the budget may truly come in because we're setting ourselves up to be able to continue keeping our community in good functioning order when it comes to the roadways and the services that we need as a town. So just want to highlight that. You know, that, that fund was a little bit different than all the other ones. But taking some of the feedback that Nate got when he was at a conference, I think it's important to note that we're funding this ourselves versus having to go out and find additional resources.
Yeah, that, that was a very good note to make because a lot of towns are very jealous of towns that can do this kind of work. And they can fund it with the money that we already have on hand without having to go out and blow it. So we are, uh, we, we are in a very fortunate position to be able to do that work.
But it's because of our. But it's because of our work and of the people in the budget committee and the town employees being judicious, judicious. With the funds.
Yes.
And I'm right at the road committee and we've had many detailed discussions about how to forecast expenditures and live with it.
And I'm also gonna add on there that myself. Guy and Jen have been doing everything we can. To lower or. Not spend money in ways that are not judicial. We probably. We're trying to be very uh. Safe with the money and we're trying to pay it back to as long as we possibly can. So uh, my slogan then to legitimate.
And I just wanna um, a couple of comments first, first on the roads. The state has, and you might even address it in your portion. Um, the state has increased their match to eighty percent, which is another benefit to. Uh, for us as a town. And that's why it's just kudos to the team because. The more we can get done, why the money and why the state is supporting it is to our benefit. And also for all the employees and the departments, I think we are all very aware that things are, what we have today will be very different in the next year or two. So being diligent with what we have. Not spending it because we have it, just like you do at home. Don't spend it just because it's there because we don't know what's gonna happen. We're already hearing there will be changes with the townships. When that happens, we don't know what will be asked of us. And so um, we have to just be very good stewards of what we have. And I wanna, you know, just accolades to George and Dan and Nathan for all of your work and collaboration on that. Nathan, I would ask, and I did not. Talking with this, can you tell me what steps we need to go through um? When you and George and Dan, you know, when you guys would be meeting next, what needs to be done between now and the October meeting, just to make sure we continue to stay on track?
Uh, as far as on my side, I just have to uh. Call my DLGF rep, let them know that everything is going forward as it is, or if we're gonna change something, then we have to. Make another meeting and go through this whole process. And so as long as everything is gonna stay the same tonight, we move forward and we can move to adopt at the October. Uh, if we're gonna change things, we'll have to meet, but if we're not gonna be changing anything, we may not have to have any scope for. So at the end of tonight, if we vote on this and pass it. These terms will become adopted.
No, no, that's not so.
That's not that's next month.
Yeah.
This is just for. Tonight, what you're paying.
If there's numbers that were ready to be changed, tonight's the night to do it. Well, if we do it, if we're gonna change numbers, we're gonna have to post another. Type of notice.
He started with.
Okay, sure. So, so we're, I, I, I don't know how to say it, but say it.
No.
We're starting with these numbers unless we wanna have another.
Correct. At the, so what we can do is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just as we're doing tonight, um. Is do an appropriation. I'm seeing if we are committed or not yet. We are.
Yeah.
Maybe do that, um, if there's things that could. So any other questions, comments from council?
Yeah, there's no ads I need to be taking tonight. Also, presentations, so everybody can see the numbers. If you guys always screaming out. Here's your opportunity.
No, they can, no, they have to wait. They have to wait for a discussion. Yeah. It's not that. So what I will do is I will entertain a motion to move forward with the budget as Nathan presented.
Yes, George, I propose that we move forward with budget as presented.
Thank you, George.
This is Dan, I have to second that out.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, none, motion carries. Thank you very much for all of your work on this. Much appreciated. And for the department leads, uh, you know, Chris and Guy. We will now move on to the ADA entitled six plan approval, and I believe Dan is going to be covering this.
Very good. Yeah, but first of all, I'd like to apologize for the late delivery of this. Uh. I updated this document based upon. Our passion to deliver the best uh, application to the, for the CCMG grant. Like last night, uh, we received an input uh, from NDOT about some additional requirements that need to be in place. I'll also preface this by saying this isn't the first time we've prepared a plan. We actually prepared and submitted a plan back in twenty thirteen. Bob Hall actually did that for us and uh. And, and I was hoping to be able to leverage that, uh, and simply update the additional requirements included by the big regret. So. I sent that out to uh, council members this afternoon. Um, I hope you found it enjoyable reading.
I did appreciate the highlight, the challenges.
It was nice.
Um, so one of the net effects of the requirements is there's some additional responsibilities that the town have to take on. Uh, as part of this compliance and uh. 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 Uh, gas assessment and transition. It's basically an action plan to address the gaps for uh. Wants for disabilities safe. Uh, so I'll just open it up first. Did folks get a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions before I thought I'd just run through and touch on the highlighted areas of our actions or commitments that we're making?
Yeah, great. Now, the only, I just have one comment. My knee jerk reaction when I first saw it, man, is uh, some of this is in our handbook. But the handbook is a plan.
Yeah.
And, and I was going in that direction and I thought through this, no, that's. That's different than what you have to do here. It's for NDOT, so.
But I.
There are some, yeah, go ahead.
Um, but I do think, George, you bring up a really good point, and that was one of the things I had down, it's down here. Is, for example, on page five, when they talk about the training that's required, um, is those are things that I think HR and our ADA need. Can work together on. So whether, and kind of do that training, do the, the ADA training, do the handler training and just incorporate it into maybe a mandatory two hour training, whatever is required of employees. So I think that's great. It's all like that.
Hey, so this plan is broken up into two parts. The first is the Title VI Implementation Plan. The second part is an ADA Transition Plan. They are tightly coupled in a number of uh, sections. And uh, if you sit down and read through it, you'll pick them out. Uh, moving through the document, uh, the first point of commitment is on page twenty six of our combined package. Is uh, section two called Title VI Assurances. It requires. Our president to sign uh. The insurance uh, statements that are in Appendix A, so we'll get to those. Um, the second uh, point I'd like to, to, to. Uh, just point out is in the second pretty title, Sixth Coordinator. Um, uh, we've nominated Guy Rogers in this document to fulfill that coordinator role. Uh, I will make uh. Um, primarily, this is driven by the fact that a lot of the deficiencies or facilities related, and it just made sense to, uh, at this point. Uh, make Guy that, that point person. Uh, that does not uh, mean at any point in the future, this is our plan. Uh, if we find uh, the best overwhelming guy and we have a better fit, we're always welcome to change this. So. It's a commitment today, but uh, it's our plan and we can make updates as necessary. Uh, we have a little uh. Organizational chart, which is intended to simply show for the purposes of Title VI and the ADA compliance that uh, this, this uh, coordinator. Is directly responsible to town council and interfaces with all uh, the various departments that we have. That brings me to the complaint process, uh, which is item five. Uh, there is a. Process that's defined uh, to file a complaint should somebody want to do that. Uh, there is a standard form uh, which we will need to post on the town's website. So we'll need Jen to do that, and that we accept this plan tonight. Um, item seven, limited English proficiency. This recognizes that not everybody will, will uh, possibly speak English. Um, I can say that uh, for the, for uh, the town of Clear Lake, we do not meet five percent. Uh, which is a threshold by which we would have to do extra things for translating for that, that particular uh, part of our population. We're actually less than one percent uh, Spanish. Um, one percent uh. Indo, yes, thank you. So, um. Number ten, Title VI Training Program. This is a commitment by the town to train its staff, uh. And uh, at least once every two years. This ties into the HR uh, area and we want to formalize that and connect those dots. Uh, eleven is annual goals and accomplishments. So we're uh, on the hook each year. Uh, to submit a Title VI Annual Report uh, to NDOT and have that on file. And essentially, it's those four bullets, which is any complaints. Have been received. The uh, efforts that we've undertaken for public outreach, uh. Anything that is counted and progress towards uh, our accessibility and that can be goals. The appendices is simply um, the uh, various forms. So Appendix A is what we'll need to print out by signing tonight. Uh, so Nathan, if you get that. Turn it out, assuming that we accept this plan. So that's why I'll assign that. Uh, Appendix B is the complaint form that needs to be uh, on the webpage. C is just a uh, reiteration of the word charts. And D is the uh. Uh, percentages of other non uh. English speaking. Uh. And uh, LAP strategy because uh, we didn't meet the five percent threshold. Is simply uh, our responsibilities are to be able to respond should somebody ask. Uh. Uh, for an interpretation of our meetings and our services. Okay, that is the Title VI section. Any questions on that? Right. That. Oh, good there. Right. Just a very good.
That's what I thought. I didn't, I didn't.
Transition. Um, again, we have the same coordinator. Uh. We have a notice of ADA rights, so we need to post on the town hall's web, website a statement uh, regarding. Non discrimination policies. Um, flowing down from there, we have item six is called the Transition Plan. So uh, these are some known uh, barriers, the label of barriers. So we have uh, one in communication. Uh, that is the uh, provision or functionally equivalent communication access such as TRS, DTY. For video relay services, uh, town hall, uh, telecommunications, relay service. Or text telephone uh, for death in the Stubeck County area. So this, uh, I've already spoken to Jen to talk to our IT provider and see if that's something that we can add to the service. Uh, then we had an architectural barrier, um, whereby uh, we have. Uh, inaccessible entrance due to lack of automated or low force door operation. Uh, talking about our front door. Which is just a manual uh, open, whereas many buildings, you see a push button and a power open and. And close. So that's considered a barrier. Uh. There's uh, two uh. Kind of phased remedy uh, that's prescribed in here. One is to install a doorbell and have a sign that uh. Uh, points out the doorbell so that if a handicapped individual needs assistance, they have a way of calling. Uh, internally here, doorbell. Uh, and in parallel, uh, we would be uh, working uh. To get a automatic door opener source installed at a later date. Uh, and then the third barrier was programmatic, uh, inadequate public participation or outreach. I couldn't find anywhere records that we've held one recently. So um, I'm considering tonight our first uh. Uh, discussion about this plan. Uh, and uh, we'll continue to uh, probably handle that by virtue of an Jedi among town council regular session agenda. This is what I'm suggesting. Plans. And then the appendices are the same. They're the forms uh, that go along with that plan. Good. Any questions?
I have none. I think it's. Good that it was brought to our attention and it's unfortunate that it's. That for so long, but we move forward. We work to fix things. So bitch off on us soon, but totally work on it.
Then I would like to make a motion. That we have sent the. We said the town of Clear Lake, uh, Indiana Title VI Implementation Plan and ADA Transition Plan. As written.
We have a motion. Could I have a second, please?
Could I have a second to motion?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Uh.
Opposed, carried, none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Nathan. The next agenda item I will be addressing, I think almost every year. Recognizes the window that Jen has to deal with. Um, you know, she's got, it, it's not convenient for her with the little. Um, piece that slides through. It's. Not real glass. It's kind of inexpensive. Plastic, per Lexiglas or lack of a better word. Uh, Jen had asked me if she could get on the window and I just asked her to get some bids and so we got the bid in front. Now, I will share that um, Jen did reach out and um, she went to. Um, one, two, three, four, five other organizations in addition to City Glass. And she either got no phone call back, one did not measure it and said they just, this is not what they do. They were doing commercial things. And so what we have in front of us are, is a quote from City Glass. And there's two different options and you'll see A is listed. It is installed without safety film on the glass and that's five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty nine cents. Uh, B has the safety film, so bulletproof, uh, and it's applied to the glass for the sum of eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty cents. So I will entertain a motion when I talk to Jen. She doesn't have a preference one way or the other, whatever one council. Would recommend. Uh, Rex was um, sitting with Jen and he would recommend B. So I will just share that so everybody has all the information. And I will entertain a motion unless somebody's got a question. Yes.
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is pointing towards me. And this is just for my understanding. I know we've had some issues in the past about you not being able to pay. Due to voucher approvals and the spender's desk can for next ten days. Within your spending limit. Can you confirm it? But. I was a worker.
If they would approve it, then I could. If you guys approve it tonight, I can pay for it.
Uh, right. Because it's next time.
Yeah. Yeah, that is true.
We know it.
Yes.
Also. Right, sorry, maybe I also. What would you say? I would say.
All right, so I will entertain, so I will.
Just so.
Presenting the quotes.
Any other questions?
No.
I, I would like to make a motion uh, to approve uh, City Glass. I I would like to make a motion uh to approve uh City Glass specialty quote. To install a new Ford six five thirty four inch sliding glass receptionist window. Um, item B, installed with safety film for eight hundred and seventy nine dollars. Listen, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Alright, fine.
Uh, good situation. Uh, Nathan, if you could let Jen know that that was approved and she can move forward with that, please.
Good.
We are now done. That completes our new business for this evening. We will now move on to unfinished business. And I'm going to turn this over to Dan.
Okay, and so uh at our last session in August, we discussed the uh rationale for a new application uh residents uh to install private utilities under uh beautiful roadways. Uh, this app, this uh application is focused on uh boring requirements that then uh ensures that they go to the correct depth that they notify. Guy Rogers uh that it's happening and they they market such that uh he can then go out, locate and and update or upload it to our gasses. So that over time, we'll know when we go around the lake where private utilities are passing anything through. But we don't have to discover for the backhoe. Did that ever happen to happen? So um, over the last month, uh we've clarified that with our council. That even though there's a one hundred and fifty dollar fee associated with this application. Um, that essentially because it is uh uh not an ordinance and it doesn't have anything to do with buying the incor penalties. We can't ask the council approve this application this evening. And simply uh posted. Well, just open it up for any questions about the application.
Yeah, I think this is an excellent uh process uh indeed at the town. The only thing that I have a question on minimum requirements. Uh, do we have a survey so that when they're boring, they are within their property, property to property? Not in the neighbors and we know where the right of ways are.
That would be handled on the I R P.
Okay. You need an I R P to bore.
Yeah, it'll be a construction related project. It's just that uh like a road cut permit that we're familiar with.
Mm-hmm.
For that project, there there is application that and now with applications.
So we have the total piece then to maybe have the apply for an I R P. Because we didn't resell those too.
Yeah, so we we went minimal on this one hundred and fifty dollars, uh which is his time. Basically to go out and do the work, categorize it. And ensure that uh they're doing what they have.
And even in our last, we needed to do a repop ring guide. Um, and then going up a hundred and fifty was less than was low.
Yeah, we're just looking at it as.
The the only
We've increased costs substantially.
The only comment I had, George, is being within the survey could pose a problem when they're going to a power pole that isn't an adjacent property to bring fiber or whatever. So there's not, I mean, unless they're going to set another pole right on the property line and bring an aerial out. So, which is one thing we're trying to avoid is more poles. So. I don't think a survey would be, should, electric.
So we can entertain a motion to consider and adopt.
So I would like to make a motion to consider and adopt the application for installation of private utility under.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure, I have a second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, um, we have three A's, one B. Motion carries. We will now move to council reports. And Nathan, you are.
Uh, yeah, financial reports are on file, appropriation revenue and financial reports are all.
Anybody have any questions for Nathan?
Uh, for the month of August, we worked a total of two hundred and one point seven five hours, had six hundred and ninety miles on the vehicle. Twenty nine hour on the uh boat patrol. And three golf cart inspections, three vehicle inspections or watercraft inspections. Had seventeen traffic violations, four booby violations and one golf cart violation. Um, for police department, we had three C assists all over the county, one alarm, one disorderly complaint and one over property. Um, sheriff office within the town of Clear Lake had one alarm, one welfare check, one suspicious and one threatening complaint. And the township, there were two property damage crashes, one property damage, one personal injury crash and one got a road problem. Um, the only other thing I had to add is uh on Labor Day, we took the boat out of the water. Um, due to the fact it was sitting on top of the lake, we were barely able to cross the lift. So instead of putting their back on and taking the chance of not getting back off ever again, uh we pulled the boat out. Um, it is in the garage. It is available to pack into water if we need to. Um, but we did fold because of that.
Any questions for Chris? No, thank you very much, Chris. Uh, we'll now turn it over to Brent for the fire.
The town of Clear Lake had five incidents with one mutual aid. We had, uh, let's see here, one agency, uh, one mutual aid, three medical assist, one firefighter. We had one medical assist in the town of Clear Lake and two vehicle accidents. We saw a decrease in twenty twenty five with mutual aids from one versus six in twenty twenty four. We saw a decrease in various calls for the town of Clear Lake with five in twenty twenty five and ten in twenty twenty four. Clearly, the township was neutral with various calls in August with three in twenty five, three in twenty four. Region tools were down of eight in twenty five compared to thirteen in twenty twenty four. And we saw our various calls go down from July to August. Any questions, Dan?
Thank you, Brent. We will now, um, well, I'm gonna, the zoning administrator report is up. It is on file. If anybody has any questions, the plan commission executive committee has been very busy, as you could see. Um, so I'd like to thank Dan, Frigby, Bill, Diana and Jim Pavo for all of their work. As they're managing all of this, um, as they work through and determine the best solution to our vacancy in the zoning administrator office. Um, Dan, I know.
Providing updates for council with the public comment?
Not at this moment, Dan. I don't know if there's anything to share.
Yeah, we've been, uh, we've, our uh focus has been uh trying to find a uh solution, seeing uh outside, uh subject matter expert in planning and uh compliance. And uh getting those costs. And so it seems to be uh coming together. Right now, we're trying to look back in our historical records to see how much, how many hours that might entail. If we limit their scope to compliance, uh the person that seems to be leading the charge with regards to favorability with the executive committee is not interested in being the person of the uh enforcement leg of the zoning office. So we're still trying to work through possible solutions there. Do we have a timeline on when we're going to get to a resolution?
Yeah, we is, we is, we know, you and I have been on council together together for quite a bit of time. And we know what has happened when we've had a position open and the problems that came to from it. So, what that is that timeline?
So uh we wanted to have a solution to present to uh our plan commission members uh in the next meeting, which is November. Uh, coming out of that, then we would recommend it to uh uh council.
And I think too, I think we are all very well aware, it's best to get the right candidate and the right solution instead of rushing and having the wrong one. We've had some in the past that there were some errors. So I think the idea is to move thoughtfully with what is best and what, you know, might be a long term solution. So I still um acknowledge the three of you for all of your work on that. And thanks for the update. And if anybody, um, Nathan, if somebody, if a resident wants to know what's going on, please, you know, let them know. Somebody administrator report is in the packet. Excellent. Now, Guy, you still awake over there?
So I worked a total of a hundred and seventy six and a half hours last month. I did sixty nine locates. I had five alarm calls. I replaced three grinders. I did no repairs. Um, I set some new ones up. That leaves us with nineteen grinders on hand and twelve of them are still in boxes. We need to be set up and I didn't send any in for repair, but I will do that this month. Average daily flow was sixty three thousand five hundred gallons. And the sewer truck drove two hundred and sixty four miles and the street truck drove ninety two.
Awesome. Thank you, Guy. Any questions for Guy? Okay, so we will now um move on to council member reports.
Okay, let me get that off for the meeting. Uh, we got an update on the backup generator. Uh, he or I, we have uh subject matter expert in I and uh has completed the trade matrix. Um, of the various, uh, we we compare two architectures, uh, to our current architecture. For the backup generator, this was a um, a threshold event in order for us to now start planning the public status meeting to go through that trade uh study and show uh where it's uh where the recommendation is landing. Uh, we have a target meeting date of October fourteenth. Obviously, we'll get that uh published um, uh, on the calendar and reach alert. Uh, this is all then heading towards a council motion for approval to to uh accept the recommendation for the architecture that we then want to start uh uh building the details around and doing our estimates for.
Great.
So that's the update on that. Uh, and then one other update. Uh, on the sewer utility preventative maintenance that we approved last month, uh, we've been able to um, um, advance uh the expect inspection criteria for the air relief valves. Uh, Jessica has finalized that, that document. And then we will use that to hire, uh, the I R P inspections done. Guy and Jessica are meeting with uh that provider um this week, yeah, Thursday.
Uh, potentially, we were, we, I had, we had heard that coming, yeah.
Okay, so potentially this week and then, you know, go ahead and get those inspections done. And then that will give us a full inventory of the sewer components that would be uh part of that, not preventative.
Great. George, Brent.
Uh, I just have uh to update the council. I think you may be aware that um, the employee handbook has been updated. Uh, Nathan, did you get that out to employees with signed receipts? Okay, uh, second of all, uh council members that that have employees uh under their responsibility have asked for reviews, uh, we'll pull those together and then get that comes out to the council members so they can get working on conversations.
I have a case report. I have a case officer, it's on Jen's, so I was.
Okay. I I have one. Region three A will be later on this week. So I'll give everybody an update for next meeting.
I've got a couple of items. Um, first of all, we do have a gentleman from frontier with us in the room. Uh, and folks that questions, uh, we can do that over the next, um, over general discussion and public comment. But just to let everybody know. Um, as a last meeting, there was a initial discussion that there would be three hubs. It was shared the same meeting that there will be one hub. It is not in the town of Clear Lake. It will be in the Clear Lake Township. Will be the up between uh the old Four Corners for a treat and moving down towards Savicent that way. But we can ask uh questions. The second thing is the continuity of operations plan. Um, Bert will review that and at the next meeting and we will plan to adopt that. So if you have not yet given feedback to Bert, I would encourage you to please do so. And then the other thing is, um, I think most of us have seen or heard, um, it might not be a surprise to anybody, our water level's low. Uh, contrary, while it was written on the bulletin board, it is not an easy fix. And town council cannot fix it. Um, so I did want to let everybody know that that council and Guy and Caroline from Servancy, we work together. And there's a report posted from N O A A. It's on our website. There's a handout here. There, it's also posted publicly. We are working to um have somebody come in live and talk about some of those things that really can drive, you know, the water. As we all know, it is a naturally dry time. And we are in a drought. Um, so I just wanted to make that statement because some apparently expect those of us at this table to fix it. And whoever can do that, let me know.
Well, we, Guy, at Politer, it's like you're going to take much time by you.
It's a council meeting. You're sitting next to our. So that completes, I think, our council member reports. So I will now open it up to general discussion and public comment. Let's go first to soon if Bob and Vicky are still on the line.
Well, I was gonna suggest.
My mom said. She was when you were kids, you used to. Which is terrible.
Sorry, Bob. Well, thank you there.
Okay, sorry, Bob. Alright, everybody in the room, anybody? He can't be John's. Uh, John?
Congratulations. I am stunned at the detail of what you've gone through, what you've presented. The collaboration between you all create a budget which makes sense. But thank you on that. Thank you for all the council members, which are individual. I'm gonna work individually. I couldn't in your chairs individually and it's not easy. I'll come back and I made love to the cherry views. Wanted to see since it's falling apart like this. And I realize we don't have a zoning administrator, but certainly somehow, some way thinking out of the box, I know we all have thought out of the box. I don't even know the answer, but at least I want to keep it on the burner. sinking out of the box, I know we all have thought out of the box, and I don't even know the answer, but at least I want to keep it on the burner, as far as taking an eyesore away, and create this, we kind of drive a whole lot of weight everywhere now, we have this this house falling apart. Well, thank you all for your time, your reference, reports were clean, clear, and how I do, in my, looking at the new website, I don't find some of the convenience, which we saw before, I don't see the G I S, I don't see links to other organizations here, which is helpful a little bit, sometimes I forget how to do it. Boy, just, congratulations, going.
I was like, well, I don't know. Huge, uh, project, uh, it did come up on our assessment, uh, outdated IOPs, we did one here, or IOPs, uh, needed. Uh, and so, uh, the takeaway is, it's in front of the effective, and we are going to be taking actions.
And your feedback on the website, I know I have had some challenges as well, and I think the best thing, I will take your comments to Jen. And I would encourage all of us when we run into things, because I know sometimes I can't find something, I just shoot her a text or call her and say, where is this? Like, did I find this? Or it was there yesterday, and now I can't find it. Um, so continue to give Jen feedback and, as she's moving forward, but part of that was when we migrated to using, uh, Go Daddy permanently versus just having a temporary, um, situation. Kathy, Susie, Paul?
Well, yeah, to, to echo Dan on the, the ADA Title VI plans, so Title VI is, I'll do, and updates due every year by October first, and then they want the ADA plan updated every year, submitted every three years, they're both kind of living back continuing to get updated, but it's another one of those boxes they want to check, make sure doing everything be compliant.
Yeah, and I think what we can do on our end, and maybe Dan, Guy, um, and Dan, if we can just have Jen put it on where we have our contracts, so we know when contracts are due. So we have this as something that's due. So we don't lose sight of that, um, if you guys can work to get that added in there, that would be helpful. Anything else? I will.
Uh, I'll just make a mention, first of all, the evening that we told, uh, this past month, there was a resident that, uh, sent, uh, council, uh, a list of concerns with, uh, regards to watercraft and large, uh, waves and things of that nature. Um, Caroline, myself, Molly, and Alex, uh, from the, uh, Clear Lake Association met. We think this is an opportunity to come together, the, the, the three organizations, uh, and use each of our, uh, assets to uh, provide education, recommendations, and, uh, get, get that, at least the information uh, correct, and, uh, and give recommendations out. So where we stand right now is, is just in the conceptual discussion. Um, Alex is standing into the board meeting this, uh, September twenty seventh, I believe, and discussing it there, and he gets the okay to, uh, participate. We'll formalize the group, our charter, and, uh, and start, uh, before we go out on progress, uh, with regards to that. Or to those reflects.
Was that a note sent out to all council members or the letter?
I thought it was.
I didn't, I don't recall seeing it, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's an assumption, it was a council members, so I assumed it was everything.
He's had topics, one of my hot buttons, and I'm sure I would have, you know, flared when I saw it.
Yeah, okay, so.
Uh, there's a lot. Good, good topic to.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, work that's been done. I either states, uh, by our own conservancy, and, uh, we, we will start by just gathering all of that and understanding.
To develop. Second, or. Long story. There were issues when I was in college, and it was very similar. They had, um, small water, uh, small, unmotorized watercraft. They had crew teams from all the very local colleges, high schools, that competed on there, so it's a lot of smaller boats. And they actually implemented wind restriction on the motorized watercraft that could do within a specific area. Yeah, within a specific area, so that must be, you know, it's a report, that might be, I guess, a start, and I'll, I'll do this with service.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, basically, uh, Michigan, Minnesota, and Wisconsin, they're all, uh, diving deep into that topic. They fur and touch, you know, all of their work, and it's a good, good work, that's okay.
But if you run across anything, don't hesitate to share with. You could, uh, with that being said, if there's no more general discussion or public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen P M.
So.
Second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Uh, great job, everybody. Good job.
How are we going to hear from a young, rich bachelor?
No, but you can, uh, no, um.